November 18, 2021, meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It's now called the Order. I'm Nancy Hafford and I'm the Chair of the Board. And tonight, we are so lucky to be joined by our new Planning Board member, Mrs. Beverly German. Mrs. German was just appointed by Councilman David Marks as the Fifth District Representative. Ms. German is a lifelong resident of Baltimore County, a retiree from the Baltimore County Public Schools with 30 years of service. And thank you so much, Ms. German, for that. Ms. German is the Executive Director of Off-Campus Programs for Towson University. Please join me in welcoming Ms. German. Ms. German, is there any comments you'd like to make?
It does not look like she popped on for this one yet.
Okay, alrighty. I hope she realizes there's another link to that. Well, we'll give her an opportunity later on if she gets a chance to get on. So then now, I'll do a roll call. And if you're here, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer. Ms. Penaro. Mr. Halepka.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Pirlo. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari.
Aye.
Mr. Fotus. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
And I presume Ms. German's not on yet.
It's me. Taylor, if you could advance, Ms. German is in the attendees.
She's in the attendees, so is she able to speak?
Taylor should be able to advance her now.
Now she can, yep, she just got here.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. German? She's not on yet.
Ms. German, you're unmuted.
I'm here.
I gave you great accolades and we thank you for your service with the public schools. And we welcome you to the Planning Board. Is there anything you'd like to say, Ms. German?
The only thing I have to say, Nancy, is that I'm a lifelong Baltimore County resident. Grew up in Dundalk. I'm 73 years old, so I've been here for 73 years. Care deeply about Baltimore County. Served 30 years in the school system. In my last 22 years, I've been at Towson University. And I'm thrilled to be a part of the Planning Board.
And we're thrilled to have you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And Ms. German, I let you lead that one. Welcome to the Planning Board.
Thank you.
In the November 10 email, you received draft minutes from the October 21, 2021 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? Are there any corrections? If not, can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as distributed?
Sure.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we have a presentation by the Baltimore County Planning Department, led by Director Steve Lafferty and Deputy Director Amy Mantey. Tonight, they will update us on the current programs and initiatives of the Planning Department. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Lafferty and Ms. Mantey.
Thank you very much, Nancy, and thank you, members of the Planning Board. We just wanted to take a few minutes really to update you on some of the activities that have really been, in which we've been deeply involved. And I'll start off with some items and turn to Amy to really give you a little more in-depth presentation on where we stand with the master plan. Not going to highlight everything. It's really too many things to try and review. But so just sort of try to cherry pick a few of the things. Some of these have your fingerprints on them. As you recall, the Planning Board determined after having a public hearing and deliberations that the Davis Farms Development Plan for the Maple Avenue area in Catonsville did not present a master plan conflict. This was transmitted to the Ministry of Law Judge, as well as to the County Council, as required in the county code. And subsequently, Mr. McCann and Mr. Zimmerman both sent letters to the County Council requesting that pursuant to the code, that they overrule the Planning Board. This matter has now been set before the County Council. It was introduced as a resolution on Monday night, the 15th, and will be before the County Council on November 30th for a work session and public comment. The Council will then take a vote on December 6, whether or not to overrule the Planning Board and its decision. The sole issue is whether there's a conflict. It is not about the content of the development plan, per se. And so you should, you'll be a part of history because none of the Council members nor any of the Secretary, the others, have ever seen this happen before. So you're making your mark. The second has to do with the overall permitting process that the county has. As of November 1, the county has gone to entirely online permitting. Therefore, anybody who seeks a permit, whether it's for plumbing or electricity, or for a development plan, or to build a deck or a fence, now submits the request online, pays online, and it then gets distributed to the different agencies for review. We are 18 days in on a plan, I mean, on a process that, as we were reminded, the prior system using the mainframe had been in place for over 12,000 days. So what we have is basically a very, very new process. There are a lot of bumps and bruises and a lot of stutter steps and changes are being made as we work through really a dramatic change in the way permitting is going to be handled in the county. Finally getting modern and catching up with some of our neighboring jurisdictions. Third thing, which you also saw in part, is a further review and revision of the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies. You have seen, and it's already been forwarded, it was forwarded and approved by the Council, revisions to the appendices. And you may recall, and I think it was Paul Hartman at the time, commented how the graphics and presentation really modernized this document. The same staff have now dug into the commercial section and looking at changes that are to be made in the commercial section. Their next step is to convene a stakeholders meeting and invite people who are involved in commercial development to make comments and to offer further suggestions. So Nancy, I'll just keep going on. If people want to stop me and ask questions, feel free to. We're very proud that the state recently designated Arbutus as a sustainable community. This is an important designation for obtaining resources from the state of Maryland for various activities and efforts that will take place in Arbutus. We expect a press release to go out tomorrow. So the world can help us applaud not only the community planning group who was working, but also the community members who worked so diligently to put together the plan. Very proud that, in fact, the state had no comments or changes that they wanted to make. They're very pleased with the outcome. We have also been very actively involved in the Security Square Mall. This 90-acre parcel of land just west of the Beltway and north of 70 has fallen into decline over the last two decades. There is an empty Sears building that is over 200,000 square feet. The Macy's parcels out in the front part. I have vacant Bennigan's and IHOP that have also been closed for many more than 10 years. It's become a place of dumping of really decline in the maintenance and upkeep on many fronts. Macy's has decided to proceed with its construction of a Chick-fil-A on the front and is actively courting another restaurant to come on to the property as well. County officials have had a number of conversations with the property owners about the future reuse or redevelopment of the site. And we are moving ahead as well to seek a consultant to help us reimagine what this property could be. We'll work with the community and with the owners through an intensive process that hopefully will get everybody's voices involved in helping us look at what this pretty unique site can be and how it can be more of an asset to the Woodlawn Security Area than what it currently is. The Pikesville Armory is currently owned by the Military Department of the State. Yet there's a new organization, fairly new organization, called the Pikesville Army Foundation, that has been aggressively looking at ways to obtain funds in order to make this a better and stronger and more realistic asset for the community. It is 14 acres. So they're in a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club and with Thousand Friends of Pikesville and other groups. The foundation has obtained a commitment from the state for over $1 million. The county has likewise committed $1 million to the redevelopment and provided funds to hire a consultant and to get an organization firmly established. We are currently in conversations with the state for the transfer of the property to the foundation, which takes a while, but we're moving ahead with that. And so the hope, of course, is that we create another real asset in the Pikesville community that's sorely in need of something like this. And on the east side of the county, the County Executive has recognized and acknowledged that the crime and violence that unfortunately has been plaguing part of Essex for way too long cannot be resolved only by turning to the police. So he has basically charged every agency with developing initiatives that are going to be looking at how to strengthen and really fortify Essex. This includes libraries, the recreation parks, economic and workforce development. Our planning staff have been working on the main drag of Eastern Avenue and identifying vacancies and looking at some commercial revitalization strategies that may apply. And really up and down the list of all, you know, Department of Aging, Human Services. All are finding ways that we can sort of partner to make sure that Essex sort of regains the strengths it's had in the past and that we can reduce the violence and the crime and the domestic violence and the opioid addictions that are really plaguing many parts of this community. Next. And lastly, I think everybody has seen over time how first it was called CARES and then a second round of resources coming out of the federal government to really help communities across the country sort of recover from where we've been over the past couple of years. And initially, a lot of it was sort of, how do you stop the bleeding, as it were? Providing grants and supports to organizations so that they could, you know, keep people employed or prevent the spread of the coronavirus. The next phase really is looking at recovery and redevelopment. And these six areas are ones in which our staff will be actively involved. One is to help create a community development organization in the Liberty Road Corridor, focusing in the central sector, central node, working with anchors such as Northwest Hospital, which is part of Life Bridge. We will have a consultant help us stand something like this up so that we can really get an organization that is community-based and grounded. And it really brings in the assets of the corridor to start to move community forward. Secondly, is a new concept called Community Equity Districts. And that's looking at the inequities that exist throughout the county and developing strategies where we see where the communities are in greatest need. I think anecdotally, we could probably identify them. But we're going to be much more intentional and then also direct resources to these communities in order to really recognize inequities that have existed over time and developing strategies in a structure in which we can begin to address these, not within the government, really drawing upon the external resources and assets that we see that are very strong, but yet maybe have not been harnessed in a cohesive way. Third is to create a public art program that would be applicable in the commercial revitalization districts. This is not as simple, though, as just granting money to the Towson Chamber or the Arts Guild in Catonsville. It's really to develop a way that we can not only put artists to work, but also that we can really bring in quality art. Fortunately, we're partnering with Economic and Workforce Development and will be working with the communities in the commercial districts, the business groups in the commercial districts to bring this to life. We're also have gotten commitment for funding a business assistance specialist. This individual will be working with the businesses in the districts, not just with the community organizations, but going in and working with the businesses to help make sure that they stay strong and can grow, that they retain the base and strengths they have, and find new strategies to make sure that in this changing economy, that they're going to remain critical and partnering with the others in their districts. Public Works and Transportation has $3 million for streetscaping. Again, we work closely with a lot of the commercial districts, and so we're going to be partnering with that agency. And I already mentioned the Essex Initiative. So there's a lot going on. A lot of it is really exciting work. A lot of it's new, but it's still going to set the pace for, I think, some really exciting work that's going to take place throughout the county. So unless anybody has any questions, I will turn it over to Amy.
Steve, when will that be available? Are those grants be available?
We're required in order to get the money to actually solicit community input. And there was one public meeting, a town hall meeting, last week. There's a second one on the 29th of November. So only after the 29th, and then if there's any adjustments based on what we hear from the public. Well, I'll put it the other way. If there are no adjustments based on what we hear from the public, then we'll basically be charged by the County Executive to move ahead towards putting these structures in place.
Thank you.
Exact date, Nancy, but it'll be after the 1st of the year, I'm sure.
Steve?
Yes?
Can you, do you have like an example or the Community Equity District? It's not a phrase I've heard before. Are there any like, any models that you're looking at or?
Yes, Scott, there's a group, there's an organization called Purpose Built Communities. And actually, they really focus primarily on cities. But it's a model where they're looking at more low-income communities where there may be inequities in health or in employment or in housing and therefore being able to build up an organization that can attack those issues that are unique in that particular community. So I think that is a good model. We've already been speaking with people from the national organization that looks at economic development in like community economic development, like CDN. You're familiar with CDN, which is a member organization. And the Purpose Built Communities, I think we have a conversation with them this coming week. We'll have to identify the right indicators that we are going to measure and work with and recognize again that each community is going to be evaluated a little bit differently.
Steve, give me an example of what could be done with a 2.5 million.
I'm sorry, say again?
What is an? Can you just, for me to understand, give me an example of what would be used by each community to expend the 2.5 million? What is an example of what?
Sure. Okay, so yeah, so the intent is, first of all, to identify which these communities would be. This is a multi-year fund, so it's not just in one year. Some examples could be, is there a need for a youth recreation program? Is there a workforce development need? Is there a training need? Perhaps in some communities, it's housing rehabilitation in order to make sure people have safe and stable homes. Or it, you know, it could be that it's how do we get a part-time nurse in here to make sure that people are, you know, being tested and that there, you know, any illnesses, diabetes, or hypertension are under control? So not having identified the specific indicators, it's a little bit tough to identify. But I think those are the types of things I at least would expect that we'd look at. And there's conversation as well about how, in some of these places, do you create a sense of place? How do you bring people together so that they really aren't just, you know, they live in Lansdowne, but what is, you know, can we bring people together and have a sense that we are all one? Whether it's around the library or the senior center or something. So again, there are a lot of physical strategies, physical place strategies, but also sort of the human service side.
And the 2.5, this is to cover the entire county?
No, the initial idea or hope was that we could work to stand up maybe three different organizations. So if you stand up three different organizations and this is two or three years of funding, that at least starts, and frankly, retaining someone who can help us structure this as well. This is, we may have some in-house capability, but we don't have the capacity. So we're going to need a third party to help us do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you. Amy?
Okay, so I'm going to do a quick update on the master plan. I have to run it and talk. So after, over the past summer and into the fall, we were moving through Phase 1 of engagement. So as many of you know, because you joined us with a lot of those meetings, we held 50 community engagement meetings. And over the course of those meetings, along with a few other smaller meetings along the way, we engaged with over 1,000 citizens of Baltimore County and captured about 4,000 comments related to where people see their communities and the county evolving over the next 10 years. Now, as we're moving to Phase 2, we're starting to do a little more internal work, not only reviewing what we heard from the community, which was a lot, but also reviewing existing conditions and emerging trends so that we can start to determine what these big ideas are for moving the county forward to where we all want to be by 2030. So just as a reminder, you know, as we've mentioned before, master plan has three overarching themes of equity, sustainability, and vibrant communities. And with all previous master plans, this plan also covers a very wide range of topics. At this point, we've taken all the information that we got from the community over the summer, and we've been working to identify those big ideas. And so we're starting to create these internal work groups set up around these guiding principles. So we've taken all that information and we've kind of lumped it into these groups. These livable built environment, resilient economy, interwoven equity, healthy community, harmony with nature, and responsible regionalism. Now, I was going to go through very quickly. Like I said, we have an enormous amount of input that we got from communities, and I've tried to distill it down to one slide for each of these things. And a lot of these items cross paths because they're in, you know, related to livable built environment doesn't mean they're not somehow tied to regionalism and those kinds of things. But this is just to give you an idea of the things that we've heard. So, you know, some of these are not very surprising. They're typical things we hear from capital improvement presentations to things we just hear in the community that just, you know, focus on trash collection and code enforcement, maintenance of public facilities, such as libraries and rec centers. We heard a lot about that. A need for senior housing throughout the county and a variety of housing types. Emphasis on infrastructure. We heard a lot about roads and stormwater flooding, those types of things, as well as, of course, expanding high-speed internet in the rural area. And we also heard about traffic and congestion. And we heard a lot about traffic issues at specific locations and specific intersections, as well as, you know, the desire for there to be increased safety for pedestrians and for walkability. Under resilient economy, we heard things about commercial centers, having a more diverse retail option at a lot of the centers in the county, whether they're new or existing. A lot of folks had comments about things in Howard County or places they've seen elsewhere. Also retrofitting retail corridors as districts and zones to maybe change things a little bit from being so auto-centric and looking at and making things that are more integrated into the community that they exist in. Also, and this was one we did hear a lot about countywide, was adapted for use for vacant and obsolete properties. You know, to look at those shopping centers that are vacant or mostly vacant or, you know, maybe you've got a corridor with a fair amount of vacancies. I think that's something that's probably been hit by the pandemic. And we've seen a lot of that. So how do we deal with those? How do we develop programs to encourage streetscape improvement, facade improvements, bring life back into those folks seem to want to support those areas in their communities and to build them back up and keep them strong, not turn their back on them? So we heard a lot along that. And as well, you know, large-scale job creators in kind of emerging industries, cybersecurity, biotech, without forgetting those small businesses as well. And we also heard about agri-tourism and other things related to the economy in the rural part of the county. Interwoven equity, you know, is this big piece that we talk about, you know, kind of weaving throughout the entire master plan, looking at fairness and equity in all elements. So that's sort of its own piece here. But we also heard things that we felt like touched on that from the community as well. You know, expanding public venues and looking at arts and culture and how it's celebrated in the county, whether all cultures are represented and have a place. We had some really good ideas from the community about how to do that. And I think some of the mural programs that we're seeing right now are kind of a reflection of that kind of sense from the community. Community coordination. Residents really wanted to feel like they had a good relationship with the county, a good back-and-forth ability to get information to the county or from the county to participate effectively in development hearings. We know, we heard a lot about that and how they can be more engaged, get updates, get information about services and that type of thing. And then, of course, historic preservation, and which, you know, kind of ties back into the arts and culture in some ways, you know. Who is, you know, are there areas of the county that have been missed? Are there things that need to be celebrated more or attention brought to? And how can we do that? And how does that tie also into economic development, you know, tourism and those types of things? We did hear about things related to the health of the community and, you know, specifically public health. I think because we're, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, you know, we heard a lot about people wanting places to go walk and exercise. You can't go to the gym or you don't want to be in a crowded area. And, you know, people were really looking hard, I think, at what their access was in their own community, to trails and parks and that kind of thing. And can you get to one without driving, those kinds of ideas? And is there neighborhood walkable, you know, to get to that little commercial corridor or to get to the library or whatever's nearby? And we heard a lot of things about health and wellness, about, you know, two specific demographics in the county, seniors and young people. And so, you know, from the senior point of view, how can we help them age in place? And then from, from a youth point of view, recreational opportunities, how do we keep them engaged and doing positive things in the community? Of course, we heard about public safety. Some of that was really tied to whatever had been happening, you know, in the previous months because folks were, you know, in this kind of phase one, very focused on their own communities. But we heard general comments about, you know, better enforcement, better presence of place in the community, you know, maintaining, you know, a really good communication line with the local police precinct, that type of thing. And of course, on these larger commercial corridors, we always hear about speeding and pedestrian safety and those types of things as well. We heard about our natural resources, the shoreline and the protection of the shoreline, both from, you know, I think, natural elements, but also, you know, how does development impact that? There was some, there's a lot of discussion about tree canopy and planting trees and not just, you know, on the eastern side of the county, but throughout as people were talking about recreational space and quality of life in their neighborhood. And of course, you know, we heard a lot about recreation parks, as I've kind of noted already, about, you know, what's walkable and bikeable? Where are their greenways? How can they access things where they live or where they work? And there was a huge, huge desire for improvements to these things in Baltimore County. And again, folks pointing to things that they had experienced in other places, either on vacation or, you know, in nearby jurisdictions. And how can we improve our offerings kind of along those lines? And then kind of the last piece was regionalism, which is something that, you know, the master plan always looks at, how we, how the county connects to the surrounding areas. And, you know, that's not always a hot topic with community members, but we did hear some things about that, you know, internally as far as staff and as we moved this document forward, we'll start to touch more on that with the community ourselves. But, you know, there were comments, as we usually get, about the relationship with Baltimore City. And there were some positive, you know, comments about that as well as the negative ones and other, other surrounding areas also, you know, the relationship to Washington DC and New York and kind of within this northeast corridor or, you know, all these elements that the county is tied to and how we can strengthen those and how do we want those to look in 10 years, you know, is a big question. So as we're going to move on to this phase two, you know, we're starting to work internally, like I said, in these sort of six focus areas that staff's assigned to, and we're going to be working with county agencies. We're trying to get to a point where we can start to schedule that next phase of engagement, which of course we'll let you know about. But we want to start to focus on, you know, letting the public hear what I've told you here tonight about these six areas to get ideas from them about what we've seen as these kind of emerging goals or these emerging ideas. Help us prioritize those. Ultimately assist us in developing, you know, these potential policies and programs and just to kind of get a sense if the public's supportive of the direction that we're headed. We don't want to pop back out, you know, in three or four months with a draft plan and then more comments. You know, now's a good time, kind of here in the middle, to start to get that. And that is all that I have. Anybody's got any questions?
Amy? This is Kathy. And if you could just refresh my, our memory, when will the department start working on the community plans?
The community plans, the intention, I believe, is that that would happen after the master plan. We just don't quite have the staff to do it all at the same time. But the hope is that, you know, when we're done with the master plan, we can move to those community plans. And, you know, we've talked about some strategies to maybe do those a little bit differently or more efficiently. You know, the county's a very large place. And how can we go back and revisit plans, revisit areas that have never had plans and make sure everyone kind of has equal access to that process as well?
Thank you, Ms. Mante and Mr. Lafferty for providing this update. Do any of the board members have any other questions?
Yes, this is Derek. I'll just, maybe I missed it, but how are we planning to, I guess, developing, develop the county? Are we working in specific areas first or are we going to try to do the whole county? I mean, how we, I mean, even when all this comes about, how we, what areas are going to be hit first? Or do we even know that?
Um, you know, with the master plan, I don't know that there's really an area-based approach once this adopt, adopted, you know, it has a lot of factors in there. It has programs, it has projects. You know, sometimes we highlight things as growth areas. There are different types of designations that have happened over the years. I don't know that, you know, that anything like that has kind of come to the forefront yet. We're really just kind of trying to look at what we heard over the summer and kind of figure out where the direction is really going.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is Mark. Amy, I sat in several district two, community meetings. And while this, what your, your summary is good and it's overall arching, you know, categories, but how do we, I'm afraid we're going to lose the people that had very specific issues, you know, like, like traffic between here and here.
Right.
How do, how do we capture that?
Well, we did.
We don't.
We definitely did not lose them. We have an enormous amount. So we took all that information, just from a very technical point of view. We took all that information, right? We wrote it down and we put it into Excel sheets, these giant, giant Excel sheets that have all this information and it's categorized by council district. If they listed a location, we captured that as well. And then we've taken it and assigned it to one of these six areas so that we can then kind of funnel it to that staff team as they start to work on those pieces of the plan. So we had to figure out some way to do something with all this. And, you know, none of the planners wanted to, you know, wanted to lose that information because I feel like that even if the very specific pieces that we heard are not exactly captured in the master plan, that's a great place to start when we start with those small area community plan after this. So it's not lost. We have it.
Well, I think it's important that we communicate just what you said as we go back out to the communities. Yeah.
Very good point. Is there any other questions at this time? If not, I want to commend the planning department because you are doing some major heavy lifting at this time. So we greatly, greatly appreciate it, not just as planning board members, but as community members. So now I'm going to move on to other business. Ms. Bensley will fill us in on the reports from the November 17th, 2021 meeting of the Landmark Preservation Commission. Ms. Bensley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At last night's meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, they voted to issue 11 certificates of appropriateness for the following properties. The Dumbarton House, which is a Baltimore County Public Schools property located at 300 Dumbarton Road in Towson. The Fredkin Property, 4605 Prospect Avenue in Glendon. The Bear Property at 4607 Prospect Avenue in Glendon. The Clements Property at 122 Central Avenue in Glendon. The Christopolis Property at 1549 South Rolling Road in Relay. The Johnson Property at 600 Sudbrook Road in Sudbrook Park. The Taylor Property at 703 Woodland Drive in Relay. The Tychewski Property at 322 Central Avenue in Glendon. The Richter Property at 5161 Biaduct Avenue in Relay. Little Valley in Setting, which is the Langford Property at 1940 Rushley Road in Parkville. And the Vaughn Property at 209 West Seminary Avenue in Lutherville. That is the conclusion of the report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bensley. Now, Ms. Tracy will fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Recent county legis, or excuse me, recent county council legislation of interest to the board. The first is Bill 85-21 Zoning Regulations. Uses permitted in the manufacturing light zone for the purpose of permitting certain hospital use by right in the manufacturing light zone, subject to certain conditions, such use shall not exceed 20 beds. Resolution 133-21 Approval Sanitary Sewer Extension Edgemere Area. A resolution for the purpose of approving the extension of the sanitary sewer system of Baltimore County in the Edgemere Area, 15th Election District and 7th Council District of Baltimore County. That concludes the report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tracy. Well, right now, that concludes our meeting this year. This is our last meeting of the year. And I think this is a year we're all glad to be over. So I'm hoping you and your family have a wonderful Thanksgiving and holiday season. At this time, we're going to adjourn our public meeting. Do I have a motion?
Remove.
Second.
Second.
All right. Please remember to enjoy yourselves, enjoy your family, and we'll have a kickoff meeting in January 2022. The best to all of you. And Beverly, again, welcome to our board.
Same to you, Madam Chair. Same to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Bye.